Good evening. Before we start, I'd like to call your attention to a couple of individuals and offer a moment of silence. Individuals who have been involved in the city in one way or another for many years and who deserve our remembrance. Kathy Hill, the mother of Mike Bartlett, who's a longtime city employee. Many of you saw on Saturday. Gave up part of his Saturday to come and help us have our retreat at the senior community center. His mother's passed away. Bev Cannapa, an avid tennis player, always involved in city affairs, vivacious, fun to be with, the doting grandmother of Meghan and of the second granddaughter. And Nicole, excuse me, who also has recently passed away.
Pole worker.
And a pole worker, that's correct. And Edward Dembski, the father of our mayor, excuse me, Don, father of our mayor who has recently passed away, a distinguished engineer who worked for many years at General Electric in Lynn, has recently passed away. And I'm sure on behalf of the members here, we offer our condolences to the mayor and her family. A moment of silence, please. Could you join in the pledge of allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Roll for the February 11th meeting, Councilor Shan.
Present.
Councilor Tontar.
Present.
Councilor Vogel.
Present.
Councilor Zied.
Present.
Councilor Devlin.
Here.
Councilor Earls.
Present.
Councilor Agaman.
Here.
Councilor Junta.
Present.
Councilor Khan.
Present.
Council O'Brien.
Here.
Councilor Connell.
Present.
Are there any late file items?
There are a number of items on the counselor's desk. The first one is version two of the agenda. Really, the only change is the lower custom house weigh is at the top. That's order 89. Then we have the custom house weigh order number 89. We have the map for ordinance 27. That's the very famous green map. Order 82, which relates to fire and budget and finance items. And order 85.
What is the rule of the council?
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late file items.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll take this up in regular order. Might point out to counselors while the clerk's getting the list that between Saturday and today, we have not yet implemented the changes that you recommended. They'll be in place at our next general meeting.
We did get the city-states text today.
Okay, good. Christian Hansen. Could you come to the microphone and give us your name and home address, please?
Sure, I'm Christian Hansen, 29 Hill Street, Newburyport.
Sure, go ahead.
Reason I'm here is to express my interest in becoming part of the library board. I've been a four-and-a-half-year Newburyport resident. The report library's been a nice place for my family, my wife and my son. Weekly, bi-weekly excursions to the library. And I'd like nothing more to devote some of my time and interest to helping provide further direction for the libraries over the next five, seven, 10, 20 years.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for volunteering.
Thanks.
Rick Tainter. Approach the microphone and identify your place of residence.
Rick Tainter, 10 Dexter Street. I want to thank the members of the ad hoc committee for Waterfront West for their hard work on the complicated subject. It's impressive that the committee was able to complete a report with specific recommendations in such a constrained time period. As you know from the series of memos that I wrote to the committee during November and December, I disagree with a number of the recommendations contained in the committee's report, but I do understand that the members of the committee came down differently on some issues than I would have wished and that the committee did not ultimately share all of my priorities concerning urban design, density, circulation and public access. However, I do want to address one issue that I think is fundamental to how the city plans for the future. It is really an existential issue, and that is how the city protects itself and its residents and property owners from the impacts of climate change, including sea level rise and increasing storm intensity. I believe that the recommendations regarding horizontal and vertical separation from the water ask for increased risk and liability on the part of future property owners and residents, as well as the city itself, and should be revisited. First, given what we know about the effects of climate change, I'm opposed to promoting new development at the water's edge. Such development would become vulnerable not only to sea level rise over the next 30 to 50 years and beyond, but also to greater wave action and storm surge resulting from increasing storm intensity. I'm also concerned about the proposal to allow retail, restaurant and other commercial uses below the existing base flood elevation and to allow residents to be constructed only two feet above the base flood elevation. This may be workable in the short term, but does not allow for the significant rate and amount of sea level rise that is anticipated in coming years. The revision of the Waterfront West zoning standards provides an excellent opportunity for the city to incorporate science and sustainability in its development regulations. I ask you to reconsider the horizontal and vertical development parameters recommended in the committee's report. That is, how far buildings should be set back from the existing water's edge and to what elevations commercial and residential spaces should be constructed to ensure that the development that occurs in this area will be sustainable and resilient over the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. He stayed within his two minutes. Great. Mayor's comment. Mayor Holliday.
Thank you, President Connell, and members of the city council and the public at large. I just would like to, on behalf of my family, thank so many of the well wishes and cards and people who came to the wake, the funeral, and who have reached out to me and my family. It meant a lot during this really difficult time. So, thank you. I really appreciate it. I understand you've made some changes, which will be implemented in the next update. Washington trip went well, met with our federal legislators and had a very long productive meeting at the headquarters of Army Corps of Engineer. Next up is Senator Markey is setting up a meeting with the new district staff here in Boston. More to come on that. Again, it's all about dredging the river. Brown School, I gave you an update there. Wanted to be sure with your upcoming meeting, I understand you've moved it from tomorrow to Wednesday night because of the storm, but wanted to be sure you had the most up-to-date information about where we are with the Brown School for Counselor Zied and Counselor Agaman, who are hosting a meeting. Parking kiosks, this is really important. I can't emphasize this enough. We knew these machines lasted 10 years. There are nine-plus in the elements. We've upgraded or tried to upgrade to a system that could be more compatible, but we have to go with these Loop 2 models. There's one here. These are really important for data, for ease of use, for light. We get, I can't tell you the complaints we're receiving from the business community in my office, emails, parking staff regarding these antiquated kiosks that are out there. It's really important that we move this forward, and I would appreciate your support of the transfer. We have been planning for this since we started the paid parking program. There also are two other transfers in your packet tonight. One, I gave you a detailed briefing of at my last update about where we are with the cleanup of the PCVs and the rail trail. So, that transfer for $40,000 to identify gap funding there. And the other one tonight, which I think Jordy Vining did a really nice job presenting supportive documentation to both of those transfers, but the other one is for $45,000, which I'm hoping we won't need to use, but we have to do appraisals, potential compensation and construction easements for people on High Street who aren't being responsive, is essentially what it comes down to. And that could be up to 10 people. They're estimating $3,000 to $5,000 per household. So, that is just as a backup plan in case we can't reach those eight to nine people. And it's really important so we can send the RFP out on schedule. Complete streets, I understand about 50 or so residents came for the feedback session. We are in the middle of reviewing all of that feedback from folks. And again, I did make a typo here. It's not 400,000 in Safe Roots to School. It's not 500, I wrote. It's 400,000 is the cap on the grant. So, that will be changed before this update is posted. But we also need to find a project that is within that budget cap or something with a little bit more money that we can put towards. So, certainly there'll be additional review on that over the next couple of weeks. We are working very hard on the FY '20 budget with the schools and city side. As you know, we gave 3.5 cap to the schools. Disappointed that although the House One budget talks about a $3.3 billion infusion to public education funding by FY '26, it's a transition year, they're telling us. We're not seeing a lot at this point. Let you know, once we start our advocacy with Mass Municipal Association and with other legislatures on how you can help as we try to bring up some local aid, Chapter 90, school funding, and particularly a change in the charter school funding formula. Wanted just to let you know that we're going to be a couple of weeks delayed, most likely, on the opening of the garage because of winter conditions, but I think overall, can't say enough about here as our OPM and J and R construction, what an exemplary job they have done. There's been a couple inquiries about Pleasant Street between Titcombe and Market that will be paved. Once construction is done, there'll be no more vehicles there. And we also understand that one of the permit requirements for the garage was that we would do a traffic study following the opening and in the summer months, and that we're looking at who to pick for a consultant to do that, and we are aware that we absolutely need to complete that also. DPS sidewalk construction and roads for FY '20. We've been reviewing the extensive list, as you know, but if you have a particular project that you don't think is on the radar, please just send it to me. I'm not sure we can get to it, but I'm willing to take a look at that. And we still have funds left over from last year that we didn't get to. So, please let me know that. Also, given the fact that we're expecting three to five inches of snow, then of course the temperature's going to decrease again. However, we are going to institute a snow emergency effective parking ban at 3:00 PM tomorrow. The blue lights will go on at 7:00 AM, just to notify everybody, and they'll be on until further notice, the snow emergency. So, please adhere to the blue lights, park off-street.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there questions from the members?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that seven minutes?
Yeah.
Six minutes.
You can get back up for another minute. Thank you. I'm going to ask the clerk to walk us through the consent agenda.
Which tonight consists of the approval of the minutes for the January 28th meeting. There are two transfers. Transfer 38, free cash, $45,000 to Safe Roots to Schools project, same amount, to go to budget and finance. Transfer 39, free cash, $40,000 to Rail Trail Phase II project, same amount, to go to budget and finance. There are three communications. Communication 115 has been removed at the request of Counselor Agaman. That will take it up in the regular agenda. First communication in the consent is communication 110. It's Port Taxi. It's the application by Harold Condon for 2019. That's to go to license and permits. Communication 112 is the memo regarding fire-based EMS cost-benefit analysis. That's to go to budget and finance. One appointment, appointment 81, Christian Hansen, 29 Hill Street, to the Library Board of Directors until February 1st, 2026. And that's the consent agenda with that one amendment.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Hansen? Reduction. Thank you. End of the consent agenda. Let's move into the regular agenda. We have the mayor's update to deal with. Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Moved in second by Counselor Tontar. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Communications?
Communication 106, Mr. President, is tabled. It's the Ad Hoc Committee on Waterfront West.
Point of order, please.
Yes.
Record showed I'm recusing.
Give you a moment to recuse. Second. Moved in second, removed from the table. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's off the table. Motion to receive and file. Second. Receive and file. Discussion. Counselor Agaman.
So, two weeks ago, we brought this in. So, it's been in the record to give folks more opportunity to comment. Mr. Tainter gave one comment tonight. Really, there are only three action items recommended in the report. The first was to direct staff to work on the photo simulations, and we dealt with that last time. We divided the question or severed the question and dealt with that. So, the only two things left would be drafting an ordinance, which I think is, you know, has to be done through the normal course where at least one counselor sponsors it so that that isn't anything that the body has to do here. That's an individual counselor. But the last item would be to direct our outside counsel, Rebecca Lee, to draft a form of development agreement. So, that's the only thing left that I know of that we might want to discuss today. Other than that, I think that the report is done and can be filed.
Very well. Would the counselors wish to offer their opinions on the two outstanding recommendations of the committee? Not at this time. Counselor Tontar.
Just, I mean, the charge to the planning, well, I guess it would be the planning department to draft, to work with the counselor to draft revisions. I would just suggest that they broaden out the charge from the recommendations and also consider some of the comments that Mr. Tainter made.
Counselor Agaman?
No, no. I guess what I was getting at is the report's done. You know, the committee's done its report. And Counselor, sorry, Mr. Tainter raised some issues that he wants considered on the next round, which is perfectly fair. I think that the next thing that has to happen is that one or more counselors has to go to staff and say, "I'd like to work with you on an ordinance." And when they do that, they can direct them to do whatever they want. They can direct staff to say, you know, write it so it's, you know, one foot above flood plain or 10 feet or whatever you want. So, I don't think you need to decide that tonight.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Zied.
Yeah, just briefly, Mr. President, just so the public knows, so this isn't the end. The process continues. I agree with the Ward Two counselor that two things are next. One is, we did complete the first task last time, so the next thing for me anyways is getting those photo sims back. And then the second is, as I've been hoping for, if somebody wants to go and write something and bring it in, then we kick off a whole nother process. So, I just want people to know that the process is progressing, so if you're interested, you should be reading everything that's coming, but this is not, the report is not the end in a sense. It's the beginning of the next chapter, so.
Further discussion. Counselor Shan.
This is actually a question for Andy. Do we know what the status is of the 3D simulations? I think the last time you said it was six weeks. Where does that stand now?
Sure. Yeah, I've been with A D. Sorry. I've been with A D. I've looked at a first initial design that they've done for this model. Essentially, the model is something that's going to be available essentially on a tablet. I've talked with them about basically having it be able to plug into. They're using a special software that I use myself. So, the model will basically be available on this computer or the disk. We could project that onto the screen so you can see that. I've talked with them. They are making progress. So, they've started to detail some of the buildings, add some more articulation, things like that, that we've talked about to address some of the issues that are identified in the committee's report. They've also, perhaps most important, identified, and then I actually had them supplement, some spots throughout the site where you wanted to have or anybody else in general wanted to have views. So, from the east side, from the west side, from different angles. So, you would have a best possible understanding of how those heights might impact different angles or what might be acceptable. You'd be able to actually fairly debate them at that point. So, for now, obviously, any draft ordinance would have as a placeholder that piece based on the committee's report, but the model will help to inform you. My hope is that, given the, you know, the direction I'm giving them on what they need to address and what they haven't done well enough and what they might still need to do more work on, and with the angles that they've actually identified and that they've now supplemented, that you'll have every angle you're looking for with that model. But they're still estimating a couple of weeks more, three to four weeks more, before they'd have something that would be, you know, acceptable for your review.
Thank you. Follow? Go ahead, Counselor.
So, we had talked about having the actual baseline overlay district that we currently have as one of the layers. Is that also part of the plan?
Yes, I've asked them to make as a toggle-on-and-off type feature, one that shows the heights that are currently allowed under zoning. So, you'll have that for comparison.
Further questions? As long as Mr. Port is at the microphone. Thank you, Mr. Port. Further discussion of the motion to receive and file. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I want to thank the Chair and all the committee members for your diligence, for your hard work on this. Obviously, it ain't done yet. Mr. Vogel, can you come back? We have new appointments tonight. Be right to the one. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Agaman.
I'm going to have to, Communication 115, the conservation restriction. I'm friends with a property owner, so I'm going to recuse myself on that just to avoid an appearance of a conflict of interest.
Yep. Here.
I got it. Communication 115.
We're in the regular agenda.
Yes.
So.
Communication 115 is next. Counselor Agaman, for the record, has recused himself. It is with respect to 3 and 5 Collins Farm Road. It's a conservation restriction coming in as a communication with the restriction itself.
Motion to refer to planning and development? Second. Moved in second to planning and development. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's done. Can someone grab Mr. Agaman?
He was listening. He was listening. I know.
We have no appointments. Let's move on to orders later.
Order 87 is the preservation restriction agreement related to the Unitarian Church, 2830 Pleasant Street, submitted by Counselor Agaman. I should mention, there were many photographs with this. They're all on file at the clerk's office. Any of the written documentation is included in the packet.
Motion to refer to planning and development? Second. And second by Counselor Devlin. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Order 88, I believe, is next.
Order 88 is a multiple trust, stick me where Connors. It's a gift acceptance.
Motion to refer to budget and finance?
Second.
Tontar moved. Second by Counselor Khan. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's in budget and finance. I believe we're up to order 82 or 90. I'm sorry, 02, I guess, is first, isn't it? That's a handicapped parking space?
89.
89. 89. Mr. President, it's related to one handicap space, I'm sorry.
89, you're right.
On Lower Custom House Way at the northerly end, proximate to Water Street, submitted Counselor Agaman.
Motion to refer to public safety? Second. Moved in second by Counselor Junta. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now it's order, I believe, 82.
That was, order 82 is a committee item, Mr. President, coming out of budget and finance, right.
Counselor Tontar, was that your point?
Yes.
I think you're right. I'm getting ahead of myself here. Are there any other orders?
Not at this time, Mr. President.
Ordinances.
We have second reading of ordinance 27.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I, if I am recusing myself, don't forget me this time.
It is.
Go ahead.
A zoning ordinance related to the zoning map entitled "Zoning Map Change Proposed", dated November 13th, 2018. It's jointly submitted, Counselors Junta and O'Brien. It's in for second reading, and it relates to the map that was on your desk, just for purposes of showing the clear green area or the green area clearly.
Motion to remove from the table? Second. Moved in second, removed from the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out. Off the table. Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second by Counselor Zied. No discussion? We'll take a roll call on this matter.
Roll call to approve ordinance 27 on second reading. Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin has recused himself. Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
And one recused. Ordinance passes.
Could someone, Counselor Khan, oh, here he comes. Little bird. Great timing. We're all ready for committee items. Budget and finance.
Motion to remove order 82 Fire Department Fees Fiscal Year 2019.
Second.
Moved in second and to remove from committee. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out. Counselor Tontar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second by Counselor Khan. Discussion.
Yeah, Budget and Finance Committee had two meetings on this. We met with Chief Leclair, Deputy Bradshaw, Finance Director Manning made one of the meetings, and CIO Coogan attended one, two, both of the meetings, I believe. We spent some time on this, and we also amended it, and I wanted to, there's fairly substantial amendments to it, so I wanted you to have a copy of that as I work through that. We also gathered information in addition to that provided by the chiefs, and I just want to speak a little bit about that. That's on the spreadsheet that you have. The Pioneer Institute Mass Analysis has this, I think I emailed it to council members, has this software on their websites that allows you to enter all sorts of metrics into it, and it will define the communities in Massachusetts most like your community. I did that with the fire data, and I came up with a set of communities that were most like us in terms of expenditures on fire services. And then I checked their websites. Not all communities have fire permit fee data on the website. Those, I just went down the list. I got the ones that did until I had 10 communities, which it's time-consuming, so I didn't go beyond 10 communities. I had 10 communities, which it's time consuming, so I didn't go beyond 10 communities. I think you understand that. But, and then I also, we added Salisbury, and, well, we added Amesbury. Salisbury was already there. So you have comparable data. I'll discuss that in a minute. So these are fees, and I wanted to discuss a little bit, as we did in committee, the difference between fees and taxes. I did a little research on Proposition 2 and 1/2. Proposition 2 and 1/2, when it was passed in the early 80s and put into effect, one of the intents of the legislation, and it was a question on the ballot, was that communities use fees more than they had in the past, and indeed, that has happened. All right? It's really sort of a public finance philosophical question as to whether you pay for certain services with fees versus, versus taxes. However, given the, given the environment created by Proposition 2 and 1/2, it leads, my view, in spite of my opposition to fees in general, that in this environment that has been created, we're capped in terms of Prop. 2 and 1/2, or we need to seek revenues, and that should be done by fees. Now, the difference between a fee and a tax is, a fee should be undertaken, first of all, for a private benefit rather than a public benefit. All right? So a fee is charged, if, for instance, if you put a fire alarm in your, in your home, or if you're a commercial gas station, you, you want to have, put a tank in, underground tank for gas, there's a private benefit from that. So it's not an immediate public benefit. So generally, fees, fees are charged for that kind of activity, because the public at large is not benefiting from it. It's only a private individual benefits from it. Secondly, the fee should be commensurate to the service provided. All right? In other words, the fee should reflect the cost to the community of undertaking the service. And so that's interesting, because it's not the easiest thing in the world to do. All right? So it is, in public finance, quite often, what communities do is they use a list of comparable communities, all right, as a proxy for calculating that cost. And you'll see that, if you examine the data, that, that the proposals that the fire chief made and the deputy are commensurate with, with what's charged in other communities. It's just, it's somewhat difficult just to make that calculation, to break out the costs. However, the chief, in testimony before the committee, did indicate the hours that are often spent where the deputy goes out and, you know, examines buildings, and it's not up to code. He has to go back out repeatedly, so it's hours on many of these inspections, both commercial and sometimes private as well. For the most part, the fees do not affect residents so much as they're, a lot of fees are commercial. The only one that does affect residents is, is for the fire alarm, especially when you sell, when the house goes on the market. As a matter of fact, one of the things that, that got the chief to look at the fees was when they went out and, and did inspections, and so many realtors were saying, wow, you are really cheap compared to other communities that we go to. So that, that kind of put the idea in his head, I'm afraid, or to our benefit. And, and so, another point, you'll see that there are a couple of things that were added. One is for outdoor burning. We've always required that the public, when they want to burn outside, I think the burning season is right about from now to about April, where you can, where you can burn brush. And the chief thought it was important to assign a fee to that, so that, that residents who take advantage of that would contact the fire department, and, because the fire department really wants to talk to them about the appropriate ways of doing that. And also, of course, there's some, some neighborhoods where they just would not want people burning, all right, outside, as you can understand. So you'll note also that the, we put in there that the waiver would be at the discretion of the, of the chief. That's, that's based on hardship and his, his judgment, and that is actually, has been current practice informally for a while. So two of us recommend that you vote yes on this. There was one opposed.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion. Counselor Jenta.
I have a couple of questions. Hopefully, folks from the mayor's office can help us out. On the, on the unvented gas appliance, it says we're going to go from $0 to $50. Does this mean this is going to be a double inspection? Because it's a gas appliance, would not the plumbing inspector be out there to inspect the gas?
It's a good question. As far as I understand, it would be separate inspections, one for gas and one for fire, from what I understand.
Okay. Now, I, my understanding on an unvented gas appliance, which was illegal in Massachusetts until, you know, a few years ago, that there, there's a need to have a carbon monoxide detector anytime you put one in. So I can see where the fire department sort of falls into that, but I do see where this person's going to end up paying two fees, one for the, one for the plumbing inspector, and then one for the fire department. That doesn't seem fair to me, so I think we need to look into that. And then I'll, I'll continue on with just some comments on this. I wasn't able to get to the budget and finance meeting, and I apologize for that. I do realize that, you know, we're looking at, it looks like 11 other towns on this. I do want people to realize that, you know, some of these fees are going up substantially. We got fees going anywhere from 20 to 50 to 20 to $500. And I understand they're for different, different type of things, but these are not going from, you know, 25 to $30. These are significant increases, and I'm not sure that folks understand that. The other thing I want people to understand right now, if you have a commercial tent that you put in your backyard for, for a wedding or, or graduation, wherever the case may be, though you probably won't be charged $50 by the city, your commercial tent is going to increase by $50, because that is not a fee that we've ever had in the city, and it's, it's long history, but now it's $50. And when I look at the other towns that we're comparing ourselves to, only three out of 11 actually charge this fee. So that, that seems unusual to me. When we look at the unvented gas appliance, only two out of 11 towns charge a fee on that. So again, that, that makes me feel like maybe we really need to look at what the plumbing inspector's doing, and that may be the case on that one. And then, you know, I represent the west end of town, and outside burning is something that happens, you know, very frequently. We have big yards, we have lots of trees, we burn a lot of branches. We don't live in the, you know, the tight part of town, if you will. And again, when I look at this list of who we're comparing ourselves to, there's only one town out of 11 that considers a permit for outside burning. So I'm really not in favor of this outside burning fee at all, and it doesn't look like most of the towns that we're comparing ourselves to are either. So I certainly would like to put an amendment to at least remove the commercial tent and the outside burning, and then maybe look at what's going on with the unvented gas appliance with the plumbing inspector.
Thank you, Counselor. Would you like to speak, Matt?
I just wanted to clarify. I think there are a few questions. As far, as far as the, the unvented gas, I believe, from what I understand, if both the plumbing inspector and the fire inspector have to come out, I believe that, that there would be a two-fee system. So I believe that the plumbing inspector is also on a contractual basis as well. So I do believe that would be a fee based on who goes out and does the inspection. I believe there's two separate inspections. As far as the commercial tent, from what I understand from the chief, something like a graduation or ceremony, a ceremonial event in your backyard would not be part of that fee structure. I think the commercial tent is more about some of the events that happen downtown in, in public spaces. I think that's when the charge would go into effect for tents.
Thank you. I believe, Counselor Zee, did you follow?
Just a point of order. Was that a motion? I think we should deal with that.
I did not hear a motion. If a member would like to make a motion, they can do so. Counselor Jenta.
So I did make a motion, though it was in amongst a lot of things.
That was an expression of interest, not a motion.
Exactly. I'm just trying to bring some more information out here. If it's, the tent is truly commercial. It does say that. I think we do need to note it someplace that residentially, you're, you're off the hook. And as far as the unvented gas appliance, two inspections is definitely overkill on this. A plumbing inspector can handle this easily. In the outside burning, I will like to make a motion, but I think I'll let everybody else speak. I know the chairman wants to speak on this first, and we'll, we'll work it out.
Fair enough. Chairman Tanta?
Actually, just a note, I forgot to mention, in terms of the, the size of the increase, this is the first increase in at least 15 years. Maybe, maybe, perhaps longer. We couldn't, we couldn't figure out when the last time the fees were set. And so, you know, if, if you assume we're not going to increase the fees for another 15 years, because it's, we're capped by legislation, you know, so you're increasing fees once every 30 years or so. So, I mean, I think that was my thinking on it.
Counselor Zee?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I was, I was the one knowing committee, so as always, I feel obliged to stand up and explain why. So some of them have been brought up by Counselor from Ward 5, but there's a couple of things I wanted to say as well. The first one is that one of my objections in committee was the concept that comparing to other communities is somehow a suitable way to determine what the fee should be. So while, while I, I guess what I'm saying is I respectfully disagree with the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee that it's a proxy to calculate costs, because that in some way assumes that other communities are actually calculating the cost. So instead, it's really just who raises their fee first, and then everybody chases, and then everybody says, well, yeah, but they're charging 50. So that, that's, that one's not something I acquiesce to, and I said in committee, you know, other communities charging more is never a justification right to raise fees. There may be other justifications, but that's not one of them. The second one is that, you know, is, was the level of increases, and that comes in two different forms. One is just that a lot of them, some of them are arcing pretty high, pretty quick. I think we tried, we had that same debate with, with parking permits, so we, maybe there's some logic to steadying it out. I understand fees haven't been raised in 15 years, but, you know, that's, that's the way it goes. It's hard to take a big jump all at once. And the second way that applies is with new fees. So this was something that, I can't say I got a great deal of comfort with in committee, but from what I understand, these permits are not invented by us here in the city. These, these permits are traced back to state statute. So we've basically been operating with sort of incomplete lists for a while. But what that means is a lot of these are essentially new fees. That's how they will be taken out there in the community, by the businesses, by the residents. And I do think that if, if you're paying this, if you're paying any of these fees, you may not always be a resident, but you certainly have some tie to the city. You may be a business, you may be doing business in the city. I'm not sure, you know, sort of what. So in other words, and then, I don't know, the burning and the tents were too. I tried actually to strike the burning in committee. I couldn't get a second, so that did not go anywhere. A couple of other thoughts, just to wrap up. First is, just to go back to the memo from the chief when this came in, we're basically talking about 17,000 bucks or so. The chief's memo says, you know, we're getting 17 grand now. We maybe could get 35. So I just want to remind everybody the peanuts that we're talking about here as we start to nickel and dime everybody to death on every last thing in the city. A little bit, little bit frustrating to me, and that is a philosophical question. But the last one is, and I'm always have to open new lines with my, my friend from Ward 4, which is that, you know, we're not topped out on 2 and 1/2. Many years, all the years I've been on the council, we have sat in this room, and collectively, I think most of the time unanimously used back, free cash to backfill the previous year. So what that means is, we, in an effort to try and keep taxes more reasonable, although we fall short on that, have tried to use new money to basically, you know, or old money, pardon me, to backfill new needs. So we're not topped out on 2 and 1/2. We could, we could, and we haven't, and mostly at the recommendation of the administration and some infighting here on the council, have left that money. So my point is, is that, you know, the, the bottom line is there's two questions. One is, you can always look at fees and say, well, is it reasonable for somebody to pay this amount of money? And then I start to get, where I get squeamish on the philosophy is everything is all about cost recovery. Every city service that's provided has a cost. So arguably, you could tag a fee onto anything. And to that end, I think the question is, what is the base level of service that the city should be providing? And I think if, you know, if you're selling your house and you, you need to do the smoke inspection, you pay a reasonable fee, and, you know, that's okay. But to, to start to look at these things as sort of profit centers or revenue streams, and then building budgets and future things on that is, is not the direction I support. So that's why I voted no in committee, just so I understand where I'm coming from.
Counselor Vogel?
Thank you. I would like to stand in favor of these fees. I'm, I'm comfortable with them, even the new ones. I understand the difference between fees and taxes, and I think fees, fees are fees. And if you're going to be doing these things, I think that it's appropriate to pay for it. As far, I do have personal experience with unvented gas appliance and how it relates to both plumbing and to the fire department. I've installed a very expensive unvented gas oven in one of my businesses, and I can tell you that the hoops that the plumbing inspector or the plumber went through to install it because of the, there's water connected to it, as well as the gas, and so on and so forth, and then the hoops that the fire department went through to make sure that it was properly taken care of and that it was properly documented, and so on and so forth. I appreciated the effort, and was very comfortable, and would be very comfortable paying the fees all along. And I know that my landlord would be as well. So I think it's an unusual occurrence to have an unvented gas appliance. There's not a whole lot of them out there to have, at least commercially, and so I would be comfortable with that fee as well.
Thank you. Counselor Agarman?
Yeah, I, I just had a couple of questions. The Chair said that these communities came out from the Pioneer Institute as comparable. I'm just trying to understand, is that on a per capita spending for, for a fire department, or how are they comparable? I didn't, I didn't follow that.
Expenditures on fire services.
But, but I'm sorry, but is that aggregate? So, you know, dollar for dollar, Belmont is spending the same amount as Newburyport?
You know, I didn't check to see if it's aggregate. I think it's aggregate rather than per capita, but I'm not sure.
Okay, because it's interesting, because this, this, a lot of these towns are a lot bigger than we are. So that's interesting. And the other question is cannons.
No, I thought, I thought the same thing.
So cannon free, that's free.
What, can you explain that one?
Yes, if you have a cannon.
Let's go out there and get a cannon.
It's free.
Counselor Tanta?
I believe the fire chief said that there is one person who uses a cannon in town, yes.
Yes.
One person, and needs, you know.
Okay.
And.
That's free.
Yeah. I don't know if it's the same person who uses black powder either, but.
Counselor Devlin?
The only thing I'd like to get clarification on, in the statute, the ordinance, if we're going to approve it, is for the commercial tent, what the definition of commercial tent is. So that, that would make me feel more comfortable with this. I mean, I think one of the problems is the fees haven't been raised in a long time, and, and I would defer to The Economist on this one, but the CPI and the, the Consumer Price Index and inflation, certainly things have gone up, and, and the cost of labor has gone up in, in the last 15 years. You know, that, that, some change is, is merited, so.
Counselor Con?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I was also sitting in the meetings. We had Chief Leclerc and the Deputy, Stephen Bradbury, the Deputy Chief. So we, I did ask about the commercial tent, because I was curious about how that affected, like the Yankee Homecoming types of tents as well, which is under another umbrella. But for the commercial tent, the way it was explained to me was, it's, it's actually based on a certain number of people, and it's treated like a safety from, like a, like a building, like if something happens and people have to vacate or get out of a, a building safely, is how the chief explained it to me. And I can't remember, yeah, because they're walled, and it's like a small little, like a portable building, so that was his. And I think it's based on a certain number of people that you have in the tent. So, but that's the only clarification I can give on that. But in general, for me, I think what was helpful when I was trying to research this is, we, we actually didn't have anything on our website, and I think the Counselor from Ward 4 mentioned that. And I feel like I support this. I support these fees being added here, especially looking at some of the other cities that did have it on their website, and hearing the chief, as well as the, from Deputy Chief, is he Deputy Chief, Stephen Bradbury? It was nice to meet him. But some of the effort and labor and things that he does to, to go and do a lot of these. So the one thing I do want to add is, if, if we do do this, I do think that there should be more information available on our website, and I think I did make that suggestion, where these are explained in detail, because if it's vague for us and we're asking these questions, I suspect those who will actually be held to these would also want that clarification.
Counselor Zee?
I just, I just wanted to, I wanted to check my understanding. So about unvented gas appliance, I think, I don't know anything about commercial, but aren't they, they're pretty common in residential? I mean, a stove is unvented, the gas, the two gas dryers, the gas deck, gas dryers are unvented.
No, they're vented.
Vent it to where?
Outside.
Outside. Yours, is it?
Well, I mean, I don't know. How, how is a stove vented to outside? Maybe I don't understand how it works, but to me, it's, it's not vented to anywhere. The gas comes in. That's the only thing. I mean, maybe I'm a luddite.
It's the exhaust.
It's the exhaust.
It's the exhaust.
It's a common exhaust.
Wow.
This is.
Maybe the expert can tell us.
Yeah.
Or one of the experts.
Counselor Earls had to stand up first, so.
Actually, I do want to comment on, 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 on unvented appliance. In fact, I don't think it's two inspections. It really could be three, because you're coming in and you're saying, okay, the plumber comes in for unvented, the fire comes in for unvented, but wait, they have to be sure they have a carbon monoxide, which older houses may not. So that could be actually three inspections, not just the two. So maybe there should be some wording, like on the first page where it says, if there's a smoke detector and carbon monoxide, there's only one fee. You could at least put the carbon monoxide inspection wrapped up into the unvented for the fire.
Now Counselor Jenta.
Thank you. That, exactly where, where I was going with this. Yeah, when, so. Yeah, when, so Counselor Vogel mentioned commercial kitchen, which is, you know, the one below. And you're absolutely right on that. That's a big concern, both the plumbing inspector and the fire department need to go out and look at commercial kitchens. But when we talk about an unvented gas appliance, we're really talking about residential here is what they're targeting. And all I'm saying is, is I'm the, if I'm the guy who decides to put an unvented gas appliance in my home, regardless of what it is, I would expect that I would go to the city and I would pay one permit and it would all come in a bundle to me. And that if it's the plumbing inspector that comes out, he's going to check the gas and then he's going to make sure that I have a carbon monoxide detector. And if I don't, he's going to fail me until I get one. But to have to wait for the fire inspector to come and look at the same residential gas appliance, it's just too much. You know, I struggle with increasing fees like this so much, just because folks, they get their tax bills and then my email starts popping. And these are, these are fees on residents. These, we're not talking about tourists, these are fees on residents. So we're making a big jump here. And I'm trying to at least whittle out things that are cumbersome. You know, when I look at this commercial tent, and I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here, but when I call Taylor Rental and I order a tent for graduation, that is a commercial tent. So we need to define what we, what we mean on this, because that is a commercial tent. So I, we need that. We need to define whether un-gas appliances are going to have two people inspect or one person inspect, and there'll only be one fee for the homeowner. And then burning outside, I just, burning outside for me, this $10 fee is basically, it's ticketing. So what's going to happen is, my neighbor's going to burn like he has every single year for the last 20 years, and someone's going to come by and charge him $10. And he's burning on his own property. And I just don't like it, it feels bad. And I understand downtown, that might be a real concern, how close the houses are together. Where I live, it's no concern at all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Eggerman?
So I reread the rules this weekend at our retreat, so I'm allowed to look things up. I just can't communicate. So it turns out, the International Fire Code has a definition on tents, the Brightline Rule. So if it's 400 square feet, you have to get a permit. So we could just write that in, 400 square feet. If your tent's under 400 square feet, you don't need a permit. That's the way they do it. And apparently, other towns in Massachusetts use that. So that's one way. I don't know what to do about the unvented gas, I have no idea. On the burning, I see the Counselor's point from the West End, but in the South End, it's very dangerous. So I don't know how you reconcile that.
I'm going to just point out to the Counselors, we've had a number of suggestions, but I've heard no motions for amendment. We have a motion on the floor, and that is to accept this fee schedule with appropriate language.
I'll make, I'll make just one more. Motion to amend to reference tents of 400 square feet and larger, consistent with the International Fire Code.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion of that amendment, please. Hearing none, all of those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so now we have the amended motion on the floor for consideration. Counselor Tontar.
Just, just on the issue of tax, again, I may be repeating myself and I apologize. And so when one says, you know, someone shouldn't pay a higher fee, understand that you're asking other residents, other taxpayers to bear the cost. So of, let's say, you know, having a carbon monoxide alarm put in my house. So if you don't have the homeowner pay that fee, or if you don't have the business pay that fee, there is a cost to that. And that cost will be borne by other taxpayers. So it's not, it's, no such thing as a free lunch, all right? So this is an effort to have the individuals who most benefit, all right, from, let's say, having an outside fire, bear the cost. Again, on outside fires, the predominant interest on the fire chief's part was not to collect money. It was out of a concern for public safety, that there, that he really, he really feels that, you know, throughout the city, even in other wards, that it's very beneficial for the fire department to go out and talk to the person. Or have the person come into the fire department to get the permit, so that they can sit down, they can talk to them about what they need to do to assure that a fire doesn't spread and threaten their own dwelling as well, as well as other people's dwellings. So there was, and again, that was, that one, he said in particular, was out of a concern for public safety.
Counselor Devlin.
Well, that one, my neighbor got one every year. You have to get a permit to do it. They're just saying that they have to. But my parent, my neighbor would get it and we would take our spare stuff and throw it on there and drink a couple beers and have a good time. So I'm not sure, they need, they're take, they're keeping track of those permits, so, but they're not taking any money for it. And there is resources going to keeping track of those permits, so, and to keep track of when the burn is actually happening in case they have to respond to it. So I don't see what the problem is with that fee.
Further discussion?
We're on the, excuse, point of order, we're on the amendment, right?
No, the amendment is passed. Now we're discussing the amended, the amended.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? I saw a hand over here. I saw two hands, one hand. Counselor Gent.
Are we going to get a clarification on the unvented gas appliances, or are we just going to push ahead? Are we going to remove it from here and maybe bring it up at a later date once we get some answers? Are we throwing it out there, guys?
I'm going to ask Mr. Coogan, since he's leaning forward. Would you like to respond?
Oh, I guess, I guess my response is, I actually missed this being on the agenda. I believe the Chief was away for this, for this, for this meeting. And that could be, that would certainly be something that he would be able to provide a better answer for.
Thank you. Counselor Earls and Counselor Tontar.
We may be able to at least get rid of the third by adding unvented gas appliance into that line, the underlying item on the first page. So where it says, "If a smoke detector inspection and a carbon monoxide inspection or, and/or an unvented gas appliance, then you're not paying for at least another carbon monoxide." That's done at the same time with the same fee. So that gets rid of the third, at least, fairly simply.
Is that a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded. Discussion of this motion, please. Counselor Tontar.
Yeah, I guess I was speaking against the motion. I would be very happy with, to withdraw this from the fees and bring it up at a later date. And I think that's a cleaner way of doing it. My memory from discussion, let me characterize this. The Chief, I mean, I, my memory is, and I wouldn't rely on it, is that he was referring to commercial, unvented. That's my memory. And so I'd like to check on that, not residential. So if you withdraw.
I've removed the motion.
I'll remove my second.
And so, Counselor Tontar, could you clarify what you just suggested?
Yeah, I'm suggesting that we would delete the, on page two, unvented gas appliances.
Until further, until next.
I think, well, I think it's a motion to divide. You don't want to delete it.
Right, right. I want to divide it.
Amendment, and we could bring it back later.
Yeah, bring it back.
What's the will of the council here? I'm, I'm losing the thread of this.
Point of, point of order.
Yeah, yeah. Go, go ahead, point of order.
Let's get some parliamentary clarity here.
Okay. Counselor Eggerman. Motion to divide the question, to sever out, because there are separate issues, the fee for unvented gas appliances.
I will second that.
And that's acceptable to the sponsor?
That's friendly, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. So do we have to act on that?
Yeah, so that's a motion to divide the fee for unvented from the remaining Order 82.
And who is the second? Was that Counselor Vogel? Okay, discussion of the division, the separation. What are we calling it? Division.
Motion to divide.
Motion to divide. Counselor Zede.
Yeah, I don't think we want to separate them, and here's why. It's my recollection from committee is that this list of permits is not a list of permits invented by the City of Newburyport. They're state governed permits. So if you, if you strike or remove that, it will get caught by the last line, which is any permit not listed but required. So my, my idea, if you will, consider it, is instead of striking it entirely or severing the question, just update the, the amount from zero, from 50 to zero. And then if you want to come in with a new order to make it whatever you want, you can do that. And that way, you've got at least one whole thing passed and instead of some dangling question left over. Because that's, that's, again, I think if you divide it, then you pass the rest of it, then what? Then it's 50, because that's what the minimum is, any permit not listed but required. If you strike it, then you've left it out, that's any permit not listed but required, assuming my understanding from committee is correct, which is that the Chief says all these fees come from state MGL, whatever. I have no idea.
But then we're going to come back to it.
I'm going to ask the clerk to offer some guidance. And the question is, can we divide this or not? If they refer to different elements of state law, can we adopt some and not others?
I think, Mr. President, if you divide it, it is still governed by any permit not listed, but it would be a second listing, which would not fall into any permit not listed. In other words, I see it as this order and then a divided Order 82A, if you will, with only one thing listed on it, unvented gas appliance for $50. It's just that that has not been acted on. If that goes to committee or is to be tabled, it wouldn't fall into the, any permit not listed, if I'm thinking about this logically. Is anyone following my logic?
It stays alive in committee so that we don't have to resubmit something.
True, or you could put it on the table. So to be clear about it, motion to divide means that we now have two.
Mm-hmm.
We have one that includes everything but unvented gas appliance.
All right, that was my understanding, and that's how we'll proceed.
And so that motion's on the floor, Mr. President.
Thank you. So the motion is to divide. Discussion of that motion. Counselor Khan.
Well, I guess maybe point of order or something. I know last time we did a tabling, and does that make sense to table till our next meeting and maybe have Chief Leclerc here, the suggestions?
That motion trumps.
You're suggesting that we table this motion or the entire motion?
I know, I guess I was supposed to talk about the motion, but this was more of a, I was trying to do a point of order.
Motion to divide, yes.
Before we get into the motion and discussion on that. But I just want to understand, is this a situation where tabling would make sense?
Counselors, Counselor Zede.
I think it would, and I'd make a motion to table the entire Order 82. And just leave it there and we'll figure this out in two weeks.
Second.
Second.
I am.
There's no debate.
No, not. I think, though, if that's an appropriate motion, given that we have the motion to divide before us.
Mr. President, it's, it's a table that trumps it, and it's a table without debate. So we go right to a vote.
Okay.
So on that motion to table, shall I do a roll call, Mr. President?
Please roll call.
Motion to table the entire matter, Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
No.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
No.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Eggerman.
No.
Counselor Gent.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Counsel President.
No.
Needing a majority to table, it passes.
We'll see you in two weeks on that one.
Motion to remove Transfer 37 Paid Parking Fund, 130,000 to parking revenue collection system, 130,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Khan. Discussion of the motion to bring this out of committee. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Tontar?
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Vogel. Discussion. Counselor Tontar.
So first of all, the vote in committee, we also met twice on this, January 31st and February 5th, was to place it before the council without recommendation. And that was a two to one vote. I voted opposed to that because I wanted to come out with a recommendation. So that's, so we're bringing this without a recommendation from Budget and Finance. So the parking clerk, Richard Jones, was present at our meetings, the lead parking officer, Mary Jo Haley, was present at our meetings, Finance Director Manning was there, and CAO Coogan were also present at our meetings. The, the first thing, this is, this is a request for a transfer of 159,054, and that's to purchase 14 kiosks. So 29,054 comes from a capital reserve fund, which was established for the purpose of replacing the kiosks. And 130,000 is then from the paid parking fund, is a transfer to make up the difference. The current kiosks are nine years old, it was always intended to replace them after 10. We were told that being located proximity to the ocean is more salt air, the wear and tear on them is greater. So they are beginning to dysfunction, and that's one reason for replacing them. A second is that they are somewhat difficult, maybe that's an understatement there, extremely difficult for the public to use. The parking clerk is very concerned, and this might even be a prime concern, that the difficulty of use presents a negative image to visitors of this.
Want some water?
I'm fine, but I have a cough. Excuse me, excuse me. I have water. Doesn't help sometimes. And so the public perception of the kiosks is very negative. They break down, they're difficult using them. And in the nine years since these, what was then recommended as a state-of-the-art kiosk, since then, there've been a lot of technological innovations. And, and so there are a number of improvements to these new kiosks that would make the experience better for visitors to the city, and also would make it much, much better for parking staff to use the kiosks initially. You know, for instance, we're talking about changing the hours. Under the current system, that would have to be subcontracted to do, whereas the parking clerk would be able to do that from his computer on his desk in this room with the new system. They're, excuse me, there are going to be seven of these. Yeah, sorry, I mean, what can I say?
I have a cold, right?
Seven of the kiosks are going to be located in the city lots, Green Street, Hale State Street Lot. Seven are going to be located on the waterfront, with two of them are located on the waterfront trust lot, and three located in NRA East Lot and two in the NRA West Lot. I'd say in committee, there was a lot of consensus on replacing the kiosks. The major issue is to whether or not the kiosks, the city, should pay for the kiosks that would go on the waterfront trust and NRA property. And I think that we, you know, spent some time on that. I think for, we have been told that the revenue that the city brings in from both the waterfront trust and the NRA kiosk is sufficient to give the waterfront trust and the NRA what we have contracted in the past to provide them. It's, I believe, 175,000 to the NRA and 70,000 to the waterfront trust under the loss contract. contract. And also to provide sufficient revenue to the city to cover the cost of the kiosks and also the labor costs involved in the work on the waterfront. So the, there is, after buying them, the city will own these kiosks, all right? If for whatever reason we no longer provide parking on the waterfront, let's say it's totally removed to make a park, we can take the kiosks with us and put them someplace else. So I personally, and I'm not speaking as committee chair, but from my point of view, I would recommend that you vote in favor of purchasing the kiosks. Primarily, A, because of the positive experience that it will give visitors to the city. Secondly, because it will help the parking staff, all right, to run the system. And thirdly, I would argue that it's important that visitors to the city who don't really know or care that on the one hand there are NRA lots and on the other hand there are city-owned lots, they just want a consistent positive experience when they use the kiosks. And to me, that argues for replacing all 13 of them plus one new one, which would be in the waterfront trust lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Further discussion. Counselor Earls.
Just in terms of being visitor-friendly, I went to Salem and actually tried one of these out. And one drawback I see here is that you have to run and get your license plate. And I see so often people waiting in line, they go, wait, what are they talking about? Why are they running away? Because people have to go find their license plate. It just reminds us of a story way, way back in the day in Connecticut, when you registered your car, you got a little keychain, which was a facsimile of your license plate. We kind of need those again in a way, because everybody's running, sending their kid, looking for a license plate. The problem with Salem is that you not only need your license plate, but when it kicks the ticket out, it says pay and display. So now you're running back to your car again and putting it on the windshield. So you do, it's sort of one or the other. And I wonder if there's a way we can modify this so that you're not running back to the car to pay and display, like Salem, I don't know if they forced to, but they tell you, you know, on the ticket and on the screen, it says, go place it on your windshield and on the driver's side. So it's very specific. So you're really, and I spoke to the clerk about this, it may be a failsafe measure. It also is a measure where you can't pay and display and then give it to someone else because you're also in the computer. So it'd be nice to be able to get rid of that sort of dual item where you're running back to your car twice.
Perhaps the parking clerk would like to...
I would simply say that under the new system, which are T2, loop tooth, you can make that change. In other words, I can at my computer, I can't right now. I can put on it, you know, happy birthday message, I can do anything. And if I want to say, please place it on your dashboard, can do that too.
We don't have that requirement.
We don't have that requirement. It's totally up to us. The council can order it one way or the other, but I respectfully suggest if you leave it to us, some of the officers really like that because it's a failsafe, you know? I don't think, it used to be a problem in pay and display that if you went, and this often happened, you paid for three hours and stayed one hour, the first thing you did was give it to the person you saw her in the parking lot.
Yeah.
You know? And then, but that wouldn't happen. That doesn't happen under the new system. Did I answer your question?
Thank you. As long as we can eliminate the running back to pay and display, either one or the other, license plate or pay and display.
Or with signs at the entrances saying, know your plate number before going to the kiosks.
That's true.
Further discussion. Counselor Tantara.
Trying not to cough here. Just, I forget where I was, Boston or someplace, I used the kiosk, it was wonderful, because, and you could do this. It said right on the kiosk, the hours of operation, eight to six, so, you know, and so I didn't have to go look around for a sign to know it was right there. And that's extremely useful. For me, it is.
Counselor Junta?
I guess I'll kick off this conversation. So it looks like we're going to be buying, or we're talking about buying the NRA and the waterfront trust kiosks. And of course, the question out there is, since they have a lot of money in the bank, both of them, hundreds of thousands of dollars, why aren't we just providing them with a spec? This is supposed to be in a parking agreement. We have three different organizations that are in agreement together. I believe the existing agreement has expired, but it's still in good faith together. And I don't know why we're just not providing them a spec and say, this is the machine that you need to buy, because the reality of it is, is they're gaining money from these machines also. There's no doubt about that. So, you know, here we are talking about, we need to raise fire permits because we've got to make $17,000. And then on the other hand, we're talking about giving two organizations that aren't the city free machines. And to me, it just doesn't sound right. It doesn't sound right to me at all. I think that we really need to be working better with our partners, and they should be ponying up the money for their own machines, because this is a partnership. It's a parking partnership, and I just, if this was, I guess, private entity, both private, all three private entities would be ponying up money to make money together. The city seems to be carrying the burden on this one, and I just, I think we need to rethink that, or we need to at least have a conversation with our partners about them putting some money in on this. So those are just my thoughts.
Counselor Shan.
So the ward counsel brings up a good point. When are we going to have the extended agreement signed with the NRA and the waterfront trust for their parking?
I think that's directed at me. I've talked, this is what I've done, we're out of contract with both. And typically, we've done an extension of a year. The last one we did was for three months. Frankly, it was a while ago, and that was because no one knew how long the NRA would be in existence. I think that was what was going through. So I contacted Steve Heinz, who's chair of the waterfront trust. He came in and we discussed it, and he's fine with an extension of a year, short of a year, till December 31st, 2019. Same terms and conditions. He needs to take it to a vote of the waterfront trust. He did, I'm told, talk to many of the members. So I have a confident feeling that they will vote yes. And then I did talk to Bob Uliag last Thursday night by telephone, and had roughly the same conversation, December 31st, 2019. Same terms and conditions. No one wanted to upset the apple cart by opening up the conversation, because it was a long conversation when we negotiated it in 2011. It was really the first time, I think, that there was any cooperative agreement among the three entities, city, NRA, and the waterfront trust. If I might add, the agreement always was to provide the kiosk. In other words, the NRA and the waterfront trust really are neutral probably, they probably, they didn't come to me or any of us and say, we want new kiosks, because they don't manage them, they don't collect on them, they don't deal with the headaches. It's a little bit like Laz parking. They had Laz parking. Laz parking came in in sort of an unpopular way, used to run the lots for the NRA on the weekends, charged $25 a head, does anyone remember that? 2010, '08, '09? And it was kind of an outcry that they were gouging. But they came in with their own system. And what the, what we did when we went to the waterfront trust and the NRA is, we said, we'll manage it for you like we manage Green Street and our lots. We'll provide whatever is needed to do, we'll maintain it, and it's really our decision that we want to upgrade it for ease of use, for ease of customer. And as I think the chairman said, it's really about keeping the customer happy. It's not, I think, with all due respect, not to keep the NRA happy or the waterfront trust happy. It's one unified system. But in any event, that's a long-winded answer to your question.
Counselor Agarwal?
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry, I wonder if you could just remind us what the terms are of those agreements? So, do they get a cut as well as profit sharing?
They're both different. Waterfront trust is straightforward, $70,000 payment to them. We receive the receipts from the kiosk, so adding another kiosk would be our kiosk again. And then we receive any other fees, meaning pay by phone, and then we also receive any parking ticket fees. That's the waterfront trust. But their arrangement is different, because they don't allow permit parking. The NRA is totally different. They allow 130 spaces at present count for our permit parking. We desperately need permit parking. We have employee permits and residential permits. Residential permits don't work in the waterfront trust lot, nor do employee permits. So, but they receive all of the income from both pay by phone and the kiosk. The only thing we receive in the NRA lots are parking permit fees.
Tickets.
And we receive parking ticket monies. Two different, which we all know will change when parking changes.
I had a follow-up, but I yield the floor to Counselor Tantara.
Would he, would he...
Please, go ahead.
Why don't you complete your line of questioning, please, Counsel?
So that's, I don't object to the fact that, you know, we have a unified parking system, that makes sense to me, and that as the operator, we provide the hardware. That makes sense to me, too. The problem I have is that the chair of the NRA came before us two weeks ago, and he said, actually, we want to keep more of the money, so even though you were told when you approved the parking garage that we would take 100 spaces off our lots, I'm not going to do that. That's what he said. Now, you know, that's my problem, is that we just went through this whole effort to build a garage, left a lot of blood on the floor with an eight, you know, eight bare supermajority, and many of us made representations to our constituents. The rationale for this is, don't just look at it as a dollar-for-dollar cost-benefit analysis, there is a planning benefit, because it will allow us after 40 years to remove cars from the waterfront. And as I say, the NRA now is going to reap the benefit of all of this revenue. When they told us they were going to take 100 spaces off the waterfront, and you heard from the mayor, the garage is going to open in two months. So that's my problem with it. I don't have a problem with a better customer experience, I like the idea that we're going to keep the kiosks, it's our property, but that's my frustration.
Counselor Zede, excuse me, I just took you out of order. Counselor Tantara, did you want to jump in there, or do you want to wait?
Have you spoken to the suffia yet? I don't believe you have.
Counselor Zede, then.
Yeah, he should go first.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah. I supported sending this out of committee without recommendation, because I didn't know the answer after the committee deliberations. And I've thought about it a lot since. First, a couple thoughts in general, just to answer. First of all, we have one of these in Newburyport, just in case you didn't know. If you've been in the Green Street lot, in the middle of the Green Street lot, a new kiosk was placed behind some bollards, that was one of these as a test, and I think that was a great idea. I always support proof of concept or trying something, so it was good that the at-large counsel tried it in Salem. But for those watching, if you tried the one in the middle of Green Street lot, you tried this type of kiosk as well. So that's a positive thing. The new kiosks have lots of technical promise, which is good, a lot of the things that have been quite challenging, I think, you know, some of the things we talked about that, you know, come here eventually, event parking, you know, making changes to the parking system and so forth become easier. I am frustrated, I will express publicly frustration, that we did upgrade the heads on the units a couple years ago. That never came through this body, because at the time, we had the revolving fund, so nothing had to come to us. But that was an expense that unfortunately, in retrospect, probably shouldn't have made if we knew they were aging out eventually when we changed from pay and display to license plate recognition. So some good things and some bad things there. I'm confident that the parking clerk has done a good search, I think, and one of the biggest reasons here is we're trying to get away from this current vendor because of long stories, but limitations and so forth. So those are some pros and cons, just on the analysis on the actual technical aspect of the project. As far as the waterfront goes, I mean, what can anybody say anymore? What can I say anymore? You know it's broken, I know it's broken, I think it's desperately broken. But in now my third year, fourth year, a fourth year now, my wisdom is that it can't, it can't at least alone be solved here. So I've tried to beat around the edges from every issue I can. The waterfront is largely in the mayor's hands. And I say that, you know, bluntly and honestly, because it is the mayor that controls the appointments to those boards and commissions. It is the mayor that would essentially take, or the administration that would take the lead on renegotiating these contracts before they come to us. So I'm just not sure, I just have to say publicly, the council's in, again, a very crummy situation, we're in between very old kiosks that we know need to age out and are creating hassles for customers, so to say, which, you know, and staff. On the other hand, we desperately know that the, sort of, the deal is broken, everything's broken. And I've said several times, we've made some very honest and earnest efforts from this body to try and help reconcile those issues. Unfortunately, no one has listened to us to date, and such is life. So I guess where that leaves me is, you know, unfortunately, I think we have to eat it, and we have to replace the kiosks, because it's the best thing to do for the city, and that represents the interest of the city the best. And if you want resolution on the waterfront, it's probably not going to originate from here. So those would be my thoughts. I'm just not sure what else to do, but I know there'll be several more issues that are like this, one coming up in another half hour or so, you know, sound the same. Thanks.
Counselor Tantara?
The way I think about it, I think the way it's appropriate thing is not that we are purchasing kiosks for the waterfront trust and the NRA lots. I mean, we're buying for the lots, but not for the NRA and the waterfront trust. I think of us as being a parking management provider. And so we are buying this equipment to, so that we, as the parking management provider, have an efficient and user-friendly, you know, equipment, right? Customer-friendly equipment. I'm able to compartmentalize then and say, these contracts where we negotiate with the waterfront trust and the NRA is to, as to the revenue they get, and that includes, you know, things like parking permits, all right? We don't, as a body, we don't negotiate, but that's where the administration has to assure, all right, that we have, we're covering our costs, and ideally doing more than covering our costs. So I separate, the third issue, of course, is I think what we do with kiosks, I mean, I think, what if we don't replace the kiosks? What if we, what if we don't provide that service? Well, is that in any way in manner shape before I'm going to affect the outcome of what happens on the waterfront? I'm as frustrated as everybody, but I don't think it would. I mean, I think we need at least 100 spaces off, and quicker the better, but I think, again, that's a third level. I just, I try to, I personally just focus on getting these kiosks.
Counselor Khan?
Thank you, Council President. I'm kind of going to go in another direction on this, and part of, you know, when I was looking at the current meters we have and what we're proposing to get, you know, we're adding another at the waterfront lot, which right now, there's one meter, and we're going to propose two. There's 64 spaces there, and in just looking at the numbers and spots and the ratio, I would love to hear from the parking clerk, you know, in terms of the justification of two meters there. The second point is, the mobile apps are growing in popularity, so I feel like our number of current meters and then the proposed meters being the same, and then knowing we're taking 100 spots off sometime in the future and not seeing a change in the number of kiosks, I just wonder if any thought was put into the process of, why is it one-to-one? Is there some thoughts being done to be a little bit more forward-thinking on, you know, are kiosks going to be obsolete? So maybe this is the time to be a little bit more, I guess, progressive in how we're going to approach this. So I would love to hear from the parking clerk on these questions.
Good questions.
Thank you.
Taking, I think it's to me, the last question first, obsolete. I remember when we started paid parking, which was 2011, 2010, I thought at this point we would be through with kiosks, we'd probably be on to another system. It just is not that way. We do have a pay-by-phone system, we've had two different companies. We started with Park Mobile, transferred to Passport about three years ago, because Park Mobile sort of went away. That's what happens with some of the new technology in parking, they come and go very quickly. We do still have an app, a lot of people use it, not as many as we hope. We try to promote it, we could promote it better than we do. That's coming, more and more people are using their smartphone. But kiosks are here to stay in the short term, certainly. John Burke, I talked to, some people think I'm the designer, so they can blame me, but I like to blame John Burke. John Burke is our consultant, he really knows more about parking than I do, you know? By default, I know a lot at this point, just because I've been doing it for so long. He's putting in new kiosks in Worcester, he's putting new kiosks in Bar Harbor, he's got these same kiosks in Plymouth, he likes them. The system that will replace kiosks, is anyone's guess? I suspect it's related to license plate technology. You go down 95 now, anyone have a transponder? Theoretically, we could set that up, so you'd have a transponder-like experience coming in. They're very expensive to do, they're just not here yet, the price hasn't come down. We have license plate technology in our new mobile Chevy Volt. It's pretty wonderful when we have it running 100%. We're at 95% now. I recommend that you come for a ride. You're just going to say, wow. So that's the future, I would think, license plate recognition. And we're set up for that with this license plate reading system we have. But did I answer everything?
The waterfront?
So, most of the good ideas come from the people on the street, you know, the boots on the ground, as they say. And the parking officers really came up and said, we really, really need another one at waterfront trust. You come into waterfront trust, and you park, you turn left, even turn right, you go into the black cow, you come out, you've never seen the kiosk. Kiosk is one in the middle of that whole long lot. We think it would make great sense to put one further down, move the one in the middle, which is seven, and move it down, and put another one as you come into the lot on the left, there's an oven that sticks out. It's not, it's not scientific, kiosk per space. I used to think we could spread them out... we could spread them out. That's, you learn a lot of things by trial and error. For example, Green Street has three. If you add the one in Unicorn, that's four. We just added a fifth, opposite number five in the middle, going towards water. It's wonderful, people love it, used a lot, because that's in the center. They make money for you, to be honest.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, I mean, the other issue, I probably, you never argue against yourself, but the other thought in some people's minds is, what happens if we reduce the number of spaces? The waterfront trust really isn't going to reduce, so two in that lot makes a lot of sense. We have two in the NRA West Lot, even if they take some off, I think it clearly needs one at one end and one at the other end. Same with the NRA East. The NRA East is the only place you could argue, could we get away with two? And I won't know until they reconfigure that lot and pave the parking. We certainly could use three, could we get away with two in two or three or four years, if anyone wants a hazard of guess? I don't know. But I know getting there, we should have three new ones.
Thank you. Counselor Jenta?
So, let's say that, as the ward four counselor put it, we're sort of the parking management company, and these are our property, and we could remove them anytime we choose. Is there a rush on doing this, knowing that we don't have signed contracts with our two other partners?
The answer is no. I mean, my suggestion is a possibility, since we've spent so much time talking about it, and I, there's a long lead time for these. I mean, if we want to make the spring, we should probably put the order in pretty soon. And there is some definite advantage to ordering them all at once, because these same kiosks are going in the garage, and that order's pending. In other words, you could see on the order slip, if they're all shipped at once, that's an advantage. Certainly, I would feel comfortable with an approval subject to both of those agreements being signed, be no problem at all, just an idea.
Okay. I'm just, you know, trying to dot the i's and cross the t's here. If we're going to spend this money, we've got to make sure we have some contracts.
Yeah, I mean, I'm very confident they're going to sign it, but I, you never know until somebody signs an agreement.
There's a hand on this side of the room, I forget, I think it was Counselor Shand?
It was, he already answered the question.
Very well. Counselor Vogel?
Thank you. If I may speak to the urgency, I walk the streets every single day. And every single day. That's an exaggeration. Nine out of 10 days, there's somebody that is struggling with the kiosks, trying to figure out how it works, where it works, where the sun is, where the sun isn't. And yes, there is a certain sense of urgency, and a tremendous amount of frustration.
Counselor Ragal?
Look, I'm going to vote for this, so why don't we call the question? Because, again, that is, you know, we have no choice, our kiosks need to be replaced. But again, for the record, I mean, this is essentially, you know, all of the revenue is going to go to the NRA, when they told us they were going to take 100 spaces off. In my ward, we went through this huge battle to build a 207-car garage. And so, instead of having cars go there, they're going to keep all the money. And it's already been demonstrated again and again, the NRA doesn't listen to us, doesn't give a rat's ass what we think. So I object, but I'm going to vote for it.
I'm sure that was an unprovoked error of speech. Further discussion? There is no further discussion. We will move to a roll call on this matter.
Okay, that's a motion approved, without any subject to? So I heard a motion approved.
That's correct.
Yes, I would like to amend it. Motion to approve with the two signed contracts.
Subject to the extensions being signed.
What?
Oh.
Counselor Devlin wants me to stand up.
No, the chair wants her to stand as well, go ahead.
Yeah, so, he's tapping me on the arm. So, motion to approve, and help me with the language.
Subject to both extensions being signed, at least until December 31st.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Discussion of the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, which amends our prior motion, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
One no.
Believe the motion passes.
So now, I think we have--
Now we revert to the initial motion, which was?
A motion approved, now amended, subject to those two agreements being signed. Roll call?
Roll call, please.
Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman is absent. Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, if I might also say?
Yes.
There's only one person in the room that refused to stand when he was speaking, was the clerk, just for the record.
We'll dispense with that, because you're so intent on your paperwork.
Because I just wanted to make note that he's aware of it.
Okay, is that it for Budget and Finance?
Mr. President, we are done.
Thank you. Education.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, you know, what's fun is, during our retreat we had on Saturday, the idea of moving the subcommittee items around with urgency, I had a gleam in my eye for about a half a second when that came up, because then I wouldn't follow Budget and Finance sometimes. Because Budget and Finance, as much as I love a spirited debate, is a long process.
It is.
And it's always tough to follow Budget and Finance. So, but we did have a great meeting last Monday with our friends from the school committee and the superintendent. We had Kerry O'Donnell from the Newburyport Education Foundation join us, and she gave us a whole ton of information. I'd like to read a lot of it here, but just because it's just great stuff, as far as what the NEF is doing with our schools. In 2008, they allotted $300,000 to our schools. This is just amazing. The Lighthouse Auction, Monte Carlo Night, NEF Golf Tournament, the annual appeal campaigns were all record-setting. So all their top campaigns, they had 2018 set records. They partnered with the Newburyport High School Band, with the Music and Harvest Festival at Spencer Pierce Little Farm in 2018. Some of the projects and programs they worked on, new computers in the, for the tech ed area, 60 chrome carts were purchased for the Brezner Hand, wellness campaign at the NOC. Construction to that area of the NOC is going to start beginning February vacation. The NOC Mullen Auditorium projector replacement, the Newburyport High School STEM purchasing new science equipment, and they continue to support STEM throughout the district. 25,000 in partnership grants. In 2019, they haven't finalized their budget yet, but here's a little bit of the focus. They're going to continue to focus on STEM district-wide, arts and music. So, K-12 Visual and Performing Arts Celebration on the waterfront this year. Let's see. Wellness Campaign, so they have a campaign to create a wellness space for both students and teachers in the NOC and Mullen. Create a multipurpose wellness space to support continued innovation in physical education, wellness classes, counseling intervention, and prevention programming. To help raise funds for this room, they spearheaded the Plankathon. I think we have the Plankathon winner from the city council right here. And that was on February 7th. The Monte Carlo event is going to take a year off. The Ed Awards will be spring of this year. And then, Ask event at a prestigious home on High Street on June 19. Know what that is?
Who's, no.
No, no. And a couple, a few more things for 2019, Visual Arts and Music Celebration on the waterfront, the NEF Golf Open, Music and Harvest Festival, Lighthouse Auction, and the annual appeal. So what we know here is, the NEF is a great partner to our schools, 300,000 last year, and a whole bunch of great events planned for this year. So, that was our first item. The superintendent also shared this with us. He basically writes a Friday memo that he sends out to the school committee, and all the different things that he has going on. And it's similar to the mayor's update, and he gave it to us for the first time we got to read through, and it's pretty good. He provides us with a lot of information on what's going on at the school. So, he sort of added us to his Friday memo list, which we appreciate. The second thing we talked about is MCAS 2.0. And this is a little bit complicated, but just to get to it, with Common Core, you have the PARK exam, which is a computerized exam that goes hand-in-hand with Common Core. Since Massachusetts has the best schools in the nation, we've always had the MCAS. So there was a cry from folks in Massachusetts to continue to have the MCAS, but the MCAS is a written test, and it needed to be computerized. So my understanding is, is they've taken the PARK and the MCAS, and they've kind of combined it to make the MCAS 2.0, which is a computerized MCAS test. And there are a whole, there are a whole bunch of different laws that have been passed federally from 2002 that they went over with us, which I am not going to bore you with. But it's basically an upgrade to the MCAS to get to a spot where everything is computerized. The way they're going to grade the MCAS is a little different. Used to be advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and warning. And now we're going to have a next generation of exceeding expectations, meeting expectation, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. I know, it's the state. So your sons and daughters will get something that looks like this when they get their new MCAS. And that is what we have to look forward to. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Gens.
Very exciting, thank you.
Thank you.
Very exciting.
But your comments on the NEF were spot-on. It's a terrific organization, and I think we should all thank them frequently and robustly. They really deserve our thanks for all that they've done for the schools through the years. General Government has nothing to report. License and permits.
Yes, sir.
Motion to remove Communication 108.
Second, committee?
Could the clerk read that?
Great Bay order.
Remove from committee, excuse me. Discussion on removing from committee. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Seconded. And seconded. Could the clerk refresh our memory on this item, please?
This is an application by Great Bay, he has had one before. It's for second-hand motor vehicle license.
Very well. Report from the committee? Counselor Earls?
The committee met on this, and unanimously to, to nothing, recommended approval.
Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Zied?
Just a quick question. There's no certificate of insurance, I just can't remember if we typically, there's a bond, I see there's two bonds, I don't see any insurance, and I couldn't remember if we usually ask for that on this type of application.
Does the clerk want to respond?
We will.
Or, Counselor Earls?
We've only bond.
Only a bond, okay.
May I say one thing? It is supposed to be $25,000, as I recall, I did talk to him on the phone. He is in the process of upping it to 25,000. I don't know if the chairman talked to him or not, but again, I think, subject to that, coming into the clerk's office would be--
Yeah, so I would just amend the approval subject to that, and note that the applicant's handwriting is phenomenal.
It is, isn't it?
That's my motion to amend, to add that.
Is there a second to that motion, or is this a friendly amendment that the chair would accept? Friendly amendment?
Mm-hmm.
So, further discussion. Do we have to act on the amendment first? Nope, it was a friendly amendment. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that will be all, thank you.
Neighborhood City Services?
Nothing.
Planning and Development?
Yes. Motion to remove Order 83.
83, and the Custom House grant, it's been seconded by Counselor O'Brien. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Jenta in this case. Discussion, Counselor Agaman.
Committee met on this matter, and we recommended unanimously that it be approved. The one fact you might want to have is that we did make an inquiry to the city solicitor to ensure that it was approved as to form, because they're our lawyers. And, kinda, said they approved the deed language, and this is based verbatim on the deed language, so they felt it was fine. So, three to nothing, we recommended approval.
Further discussion?
Takes two readings, no.
Just one supermajority reading. Counselor Zied?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure you all know my thoughts on this transfer in general, so I will confine my comments to the deed. So, I wasn't going to say anything, but then as I read it again this afternoon, I felt, I wanted to go on record and just explain why I'm not happy with the deed itself and the restrictions therein, because this has been the answer to why the transfer was okay. So just so that in 100 years on YouTube, somebody can watch this. So, there's not many, it won't be long, but I'll just take you through the recitals and tell you my issues with them, and why, if this had come through the council, I think it never would have come out this way. So number one, open to the public together with related ancillary funding activities. The phrase "related ancillary funding activities" is defined nowhere. So that's a great one to have a dispute over. Number four, the premises, or any part therein, shall not be conveyed, transferred, leased, or mortgaged without prior written consent of the city. Okay, that sounds pretty good. But in the event that a conveyance, transfer, lease, or mortgage is made, that person shall hold the premises and trust for the city. So actually, we've got a giant hole, in my opinion, there. So you can actually do the transfer. You can ignore the need for written consent, do the transfer, and then whomever that other entity is, can hold it and trust for the purposes of the city. Just, I think, very bad language. Number six, and number four, five, and six all have similar issues, which is that the process for a reversion is very muddy, in my opinion. First of all, four, five, and six describe different ways for the reversion to happen. And my point is, why would you put the city in a position where we have to fight for a reversion? If you get to the point where a reversion is needed, it should have been automatic and swift. In my opinion, it's none of those things in four, five, and six. And the final one is just to note that the conditions of this deed are limited to 999 years by this document itself. State law actually has deed restrictions expire in 30 years. There was great debate, I think, whether you could go longer than that. They put this in there. But the point is, is that whether it's 30 or 999 years, it's not forever. And just for the record, I will say that I did send the vast majority of what I just told you to the city solicitor back in December, so not been sitting around idly, trying to be a part of the process, even though I disagreed with the transfer. So, that's just for the record, and I will be voting no, and because I think that this was really a failure of local government, so I won't be a part of it. Thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on this matter.
It's a roll call on the motion approved, Order Number 83. Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
No.
Counselor Devlin? Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
No.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Counselors. I know this has been a struggle for some people, at different points in this entire matter of transferring the Custom House ownership to the society, for Maritime Society. Let's hope that they're good custodians. Other matters in committee that have to come out tonight?
Nothing further.
Public safety?
Motion to remove Communication 103 from January 14, 2019.
Seconded, moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out?
Motion approved.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Khan, I believe, beat you to the punch, Charlie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I spoke to--
Second motion. Is there a motion?
Do you just motion approve of it?
I've lost it.
Go.
Spoke to Samantha Boland, who is in charge of this event this year. This is her first time doing it, but people there have done it at least 10 years in a row. It starts at the high school. Everything is inside. I talked to them about noise outside, and she said, "We do everything in the cafeteria." Registration starts at 9:00. The walk starts at 10:00. They do get in there at 8:00, but it's all inside. 350 people is the maximum number. She said it usually does not get up to that, but they wanted to make sure that they gave the maximum number, rather than a minimum number, go over it. There will be someone from the MS there, that's Danielle Ponessa. And they've got all their side-offs. They have their insurances in order. What they typically do, I asked them about details, and what they typically do is, about now, they inquire, they go speak to the police, and then they do whatever they recommend. This is a walk that stays on the sidewalks. They don't have any road closures. And it goes left on to High, down Forest, to Merrimack. It stops at the Lombardi Oil Property, where they have an agreement with them. They have porta-potties and water, and they take a break, and then they continue up and come up Green Street, and then back High to the high school. It's a good event, and all the money goes to the MS Society.
Is there a committee recommendation?
It was recommended two to nothing.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else in committee?
Yes. Motion to remove Order Number 59 from August 27, 2018.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Jenta. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out?
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Discussion.
Yes, we discussed this in committee and also with the sponsor. This was really to codify temporarily, you know, what is in effect, practically happening already, which is to make this lot available to employee permit parking. We heard that earlier in our discussions, that that's something that's a great need in the city. That Counselor Zee is on the Parking Advisory Committee with the city clerk and others. The only thing is, where this was approved, recommended for approval, two to nothing, with an amendment from the April 30th date, to make that June 30, 2019. The idea is, after the garage is up and running, we'll figure out globally what to do with all the parking, including the employee parking permits.
Further discussion. Counselor Zee?
It seems like an opportune time just to update you on the last Parking Advisory Committee meeting, where we had a number of business owners from around come in and talk to us, really at our invitation, and hoped to continue that. But employee, so the reason this was a short-term stopgap measure, and I certainly support extending it to June, because we need a little bit more time. But at the end of the day, we haven't really figured out our parking system, I think, in its entirety. And so there's a whole lot of questions about what the inventory is, how you distribute that inventory. Some is curbside, that's short-term. Some is long-term. And then the question is, where do people want to park? Because this is a dynamic market, and as we've learned, and I think the Ward Two Counselor probably knows better than anybody, people do change their behavior. So they'll find places to go. And that means that there is, you know, what you do does have an impact. And so, I think, with the garage coming online, the question's going to be, now we have a new piece of inventory added to the total count. What should those spaces be? Who's willing to park there, and at what cost? And I know we set rates at $16.80 per month. We did not, I think, the others will correct me, get great feedback on that, as compared, you know. So it's basically holistic. It's what we talked about for a year before we worked on the garage, which is trying to get some holistic approach to this thing, that makes it a cohesive, coherent system, and that we frankly, you know, do the things we want to do to support the objectives that we have. And probably, we have to have more debate on what those objectives are, and we learned some more about. So we've heard a lot from residents during the resident parking discussion, fee discussion. I think we heard a little bit from businesses, and I'm sure we'll hear more. We need to hear more. But that's the whole thing here, is that we have a number of lots, and we have to figure out how many of them should be employed all day, how many should be curbside, and how to vary the rates between them. I still don't think we've answered those questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. It is done. Other items?
Point of order, Mr. President, excuse me. The Order Number 85, if I may direct this to the clerk. That didn't get on our agenda, and I thought we were going to do-
It came in as a late file, as a committee item. So, it was in committee. It's as though it was in your packet, committee items.
Okay, great. But it didn't make it onto our agenda for the-
Late file.
Late file.
Okay, for our committee meeting. Okay, great. Then, motion to remove Order Number 85 from January 28, 2019.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Oh, yeah. That would be me now. Wouldn't it? Come on, Charlie, say something. There's some urgency, not necessarily urgency for this, but the businesses have remarked that eight to eight during the slow season is, if it's, you know, if it's having any effect at all, it's deterring people from going out and eating, and not really generating much revenue for us. So, the idea is to move it to 6 o'clock during the slow season. We've discussed this a number of times, at least in the last year. And, you know, in order to catch, not lose two more weeks of it, we wanted to have it heard and load it on today. And it makes sense to me.
Further discussion? Counselor Jenta?
I can't let this opportunity pass. So I voted against moving from eight to eight, because I thought something like this would just happen. The reality is, is we all see what our parking lots look like in the winter, and they're empty. And I'm very happy to see this come in, to move it back to 6 o'clock where it was. I know it's only till April 1st, but as Counselor Zee had mentioned earlier, we are still trying to figure out our parking lots. And this is the first piece of it, is what do we do in the winter to deter, you know, to encourage people to come here? And paid parking in the wintertime has not been very successful for us. Especially when parking at the mall is free, and it's nice and warm in the mall. So again, I'm supportive of moving it back to 6:00 PM in the wintertime. And I'd love to hear more discussions as we move forward.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Zee?
Yeah, just really quickly, I'm, of course, in support. I too didn't think it was smart to go to eight in the first place. But this is kind of my point, is that, in my discussions with the parking clerk, you know, the spending we do on signs, at some point, gets out of nominal. So when we change things, like every six months, and then signs all have to be replaced. That's what I mean by, we kind of got to get this together. And I think we should make changes that we envision having at least a 24-month life. That we could at least have that, agree on it, watch the results, see what happens. And I just want to be cognizant that when we make these changes, you know, there are physical impacts that have to go with it. And for Richard, or pardon me, for the parking clerk, there are also staff implications that have to go with that. So we just should be aware of that. I think this is a great idea. It did come to Parking Advisory, if you care. It was, I think, pretty much unanimously supported there. If, I don't remember anybody having any. So I think it's a good idea, and I hope you support it.
Thank you. Further discussion? Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None.
There's nothing further, Mr. President. There was one thing that was close, but after consultation with city staff, we're going to leave it in for a little bit longer to get some clarification.
Very well. Thank you, Counselor Devlin. Public Utilities?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Rules Committee?
Nothing.
Good of the order.
If I ask the sponsors of the Brown School meeting, has that meeting date changed?
Yes, it has. Wednesday, instead of tomorrow, due to the-
What time?
7:00 PM. And it's still going to be held at the Brown School, in the gymnasium. So, thank you for asking.
I think that has to be widely disseminated. Maybe the press would help us with that? Putting a notice in the paper that that meeting has changed? Thanks. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
There's a motion, and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.